Already done that?
Yeah.
But we had to open the meeting.
Don't know yet. We're talking stays green. You're good.
I understand. Can't see red or green.
Are you worried?
That's telling me to.
I'm good.
Hit the button. Hit the button again. Hang on, I hear you.
Okay. See how I got through the police academy? Just repeated the guy behind me, whatever he said to me. Guy's like, okay, move on to news station. How it happened. All right. Anyone like to address the school committee? If so, just come forward with your name, please, for the record. More times, if there's any of you anyone wants to speak. We'll close this portion of the meeting. We'll now move on to communications.
There are no communications this evening?
Student report.
There is no student this evening.
I know. We're moving fast.
Graduate, get your diploma and.
See you later.
Gone.
Thirty-seven awards and.
I don't.
Scholarships and. A couple of trawler lives in town. All right, we're gonna move now on to superintendent's report.
Just really quickly, we want to wish the best of luck to our eighth graders tomorrow who are heading to Washington DC.
Yes.
So it's gonna be an early day. Alarms have been set for 5:30 tomorrow morning. Have fun. They'll be back on Friday. Looks like the weather's gonna hold out for them, so that's great.
Did most kids get a chance to?
A lot.
Really?
A lot. So it's a wonderful trip. It's a great experience for students. It's one of those trips that you just don't ever get sick of. Just keep going back. So we want them to have a blast. Also, we had two graduations last week, one on Thursday, LCE. Tremendous. They always have such a heartwarming event and the invitations and the overflow of who comes and supports those students is wonderful. And then Saturday, we lucked out with the weather. It was a wonderful day graduating another 430 students. So thank you all for your attendance and being there. And just, I'm still getting emails about the last day of school is June 18th. And it's still, we did appeal to the state twice and they did not waiver the days.
We need to vote for half.
Right on here for tonight.
Perfect.
Okay, so thank you very much.
All right. Now move on to presentations and discussions. CPAC presentation buffer. Oh, chat was nice. Yep.
Hi, everyone.
Howdy.
How are you? I'm Angela, president of the CPAC.
Laura, Director of Special Education for the district.
Thank you guys for having us here tonight. Before the end of the year, we just wanted to see, get in front of you and take this opportunity to just tell you a little bit about CPAC for those of you that don't know. So it's a group of volunteer parents of, we, each of us that are on the CPAC have a child with a disability. So what we do is we support all of the families in the district to ensure that they have enough resources at their disposable, at their disposal for their families. So what we've been doing, at least since I took over a few years ago, is we've been trying to do a combination of events and workshops in order to really get families engaged because a lot of these families are pretty isolated. So we have found that doing these community engagements have really strengthened the bond between a lot of parents and kids and what have you. So this past year, we've done, we actually did two new events. We did trunk or treat. We did our second breakfast with Santa. We did a safety event, which was open to the entire community. And then next, or this coming Saturday, we're doing our best buddies walk. It's been wonderful to be able to provide these events. However, it, it, it comes like we're all volunteers and we're not like PTOs, so we don't, we don't fundraise. So everything is out of pocket. So one of the things that we'd like to do as a CPAC is, is to be able to work with the school committee and the district to find ways to be able to still offer these, these events for, for families. Every single school district is required to have a CPAC. So whether they're big or small, active or inactive, they are, they should be available for them. So we want to make sure that this has been a goal for us to be able to be more collaborative with the school committee. Hopefully, more often, we can just sit in front of, of all of you and be able to just let you know this, this is what we have going on for the upcoming year because we like to have a calendar like the PTOs, so.
Yeah, and I would just chime in that CPAC has been building the past few years to offer more things to families and parents. And the collaboration between the district and CPAC has also been tightening up and growing. And we thank Angela and her board for that. So we've been having conversations about ways to support that work and reach out to more families whenever possible. So I wanted to get in front of school committee to make sure you know that.
Melanie, what's our balance in our Lemister Education Foundation budget?
That's pristine.
What's the balance in the?
As you have in the past, you had those grant opportunities that we passed out.
Well, on the board, I haven't been invited to a meeting in a long time. So apparently somebody's making decisions. We should probably have a meeting.
How much money are you talking about?
And then allow for. Hold on, Ron. Hold on, Ron. Hold on.
I thought, okay.
One second. So I'm just saying, it might be easier for the Lemister Education Foundation. At this point, they're volunteers. It might be easier for them to raise the money to, than it would be for them. They're already volunteering their time, taking money out of their pocket. I'm just saying that might be, you know, when we look at it, I think we need to know what is discretionary for grants. And I think we need to have a meeting and then invite them in because I think that was the whole purpose of setting up the Lemister Education Foundation. So I know they gave a number of scholarships the other night, which is really good. I don't know how much they gave, but somebody decided.
Forty thousand dollars?
Right. So that's, somebody made a decision.
We would love to continue a lot of this good work. There's some photos on the screen.
Oh, I think most of us are there, that's right.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
I, we don't have to start it. It's already started. You've already got volunteers. I think a number of school committee members have been to the events when we can, so we're supportive of it.
Well, we have Santa right here in the room, so.
I put an ad out now.
Making a.
Is there anything in that education fund that is like obsolete now? We don't spend money on?
So we would need to put a budget together, plan things out. That's, that's the piece. So that's the work, I think, next for CPAC.
So what we, we have been doing that. We actually created playbooks for every event. So we've been able to itemize our, our expenses and just sort of, I, I understand that the district can't cover for food and beverages, which of course is, you know, a lot of, you know, wanting to have refreshments, so.
Chatwell makes, I see Chatwell.
Bob, Bob's been amazing. He's doing, he donates a lot. So we've been able to get a lot of.
Well, I'm volunteering his services.
Usually for events, we'll have, you know, people that are coming.
I'm pretty generous with other things, thanks. No, I think you're already going.
Yeah.
That's, like you said, some school systems don't even have one. And you guys have done unbelievable. We want to, I think I speak for everybody when we say we want to help you make it a little easier, so not only having, you know, you donating your time, but you're putting your own money in. That's, that's pretty admirable. So we, we need to get involved as a school committee. So put a budget together, we'll sit down. We need to have a meeting with the Lemister Education, how they can give scholarships without having a meeting, but I won't ask. Oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. So anyway, we should probably have a meeting, you know, and then see if there's a way to help them out. I mean, how much do you think you need in the course of a year, roughly?
I mean, it's nothing compared to.
Two thousand, ten thousand, twenty?
Yeah, I mean, I, I figure, you know, a couple thousand.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's kind of a drop in the bucket compared to a PTO. I mean, I think PTOs are around 25, 30,000 for, you know, a year that they're, I don't know. Yeah, so that is nothing, you know, like, just to have a little bit for each, each event.
So now we have a better understanding, right? I mean, is, we in agreement that we want to help them?
Well, yeah, I want to know how much money do they need to make it sustainable?
I mean, if you're offering 25 or 30,000, we can do a.
I'm just asking, I, you know.
They're saying they're willing to hang in there and continue to build a program if they can get a couple thousand dollars. And they will evaluate it as we go along, that's all.
Yeah. In order for us to be able to, yeah, I think, you know, being able to start with something like a 2,000, $2,000 and we divide that up over the course of the few events and you're still being able to, you know, get donations.
You have to always be worried about donors.
Well, see, that's, that is sort of a concern too, where we, you know, obviously Bob has been wonderful with, you know, hopefully he doesn't find phone, you know, giving donations. But there are businesses that I feel bad every, oh, we already bothered them last year for.
Yeah, but some people, that's their thing. I find that when people make donations, certain companies and people have a specific thing they'd like to donate to. And other people donate to everything and others just don't donate at all, so. So, thank you. I mean, keep, whatever it takes, Geritol or vitamins to keep everybody.
I have a good vitamin. I have a good multivitamin.
You tell us what it takes because you don't want to, you want to continue to motivate everybody and get them excited and.
Exactly.
From what I've seen at the two or three events that I went to. Unbelievable.
And if anybody's around, we are having the best buddies event at Doyle Conservation this Saturday at 11.
I was gonna say, rain or shine?
Rain or shine. Yep, we're doing a big potluck. So everybody's bringing something. So we'll do the walk. And then it's a potluck picnic afterwards. We have games and peace painting. Project Apples will be there. They've been wonderful. They are usually at, I think, three out of the four events. So they usually do like a giant sand table, water table.
Saturday or Sunday?
Uh, Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
So.
All right.
And thank you for the resources that you provide also. It's not just your events. You always give additional resources, the monthly calendars. You do quite a bit. So thank you for all that that you do. And your pups.
Thank you. Yeah, and the dogs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Let me look for new Santa.
I thought he was pretty good.
Yeah, I'm dragging himself around like he got hit by a sleigh, like he got his foot caught under the sleigh. Seniarity. All right, next we have Mr. Burr for the Chatwell presentation.
It's a piece of technology.
You can point it over there.
Oh, where are they?
You have it in your.
I'd like to be visualized.
I'm not doing any of that fancy stuff, that's for sure. I just want to be, okay. All right, well, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Bob Burr. I'm the food service director for the schools here. And this is our team. Of course, I'm the director and we hired two new people, Ashley Denny, she's our dietitian, an assistant director. And Mark Valentine's our district chef and also assistant director as well. Chris Callahan remains our district manager. On our agenda tonight. We're gonna talk about program highlights, community involvement, and assistance participation. Twenty-three, twenty-four, end of year financials, and last but not least, the twenty-four, twenty-five upcoming challenges for this year. Our program highlights, we got 148,000 in supply chain assistance, which that is assistance to help with inflation and food costs from the USDA. They've been giving that to us for the past three years. There is a little talk that that is going to end this coming year, but, you know, we'll wait to cross that bridge when we get to it. We made approximately over 750,000 and we are investing that back into the program, solely but surely. We, so far, we've done about 260,000 investment back into the program. And as of last week, we just added a couple more items. So we're actually gonna be in the 300s. And the stuff that we're investing back is stuff that's needed. Cafeteria tables have been pretty beat up over the years, so we're eventually gonna replace all cafeteria tables at all the different, all the schools that we have. We've been consistently updating ovens, washers, dryers, reach-in refrigerators, freezers, heating cabinets. And we updated our POS system this year as well to a mosaic system. So I'm constantly working with Melanie to constantly do these updates and just kind of stay ahead of everything. And so. Also, working with the UMass dietetic intern, we've been doing that for about six years now. We get a dietitian every spring and fall. And we just use them in the district for different reasons. Could be anywhere from classroom things to little speeches they want to give or things like that. This year, we've done close to 50 events altogether throughout the district. I kind of broke it down. We've done 15 cafeteria events. We've done some life skill events, healthy eating, education. We also done 26 elementary education events. We also threw in some health fairs in there as well, but we're constantly doing quite a bit of events. And this is probably the most events we've done all, since I've been here, since 2009. Like I said, close to 50, and hopefully we'll be doing more of that next year. Helping our community. What we've done this year, we've put 15, $100 into scholarships, three, they were awarded to three different culinary students this year. We've also helped with the flood this year, early September. We opened up a couple shelters. We worked 24/7 until it was not needed. We staffed it, we fed, we cooked. We helped out quite a bit with that. This year, we also did a Jenny's Helping Hand donation. Each month, we collect some canned, canned goods and we collect over 2,000 items. And that number is still climbing as we speak. And we're gonna obviously just keep on going with that through, through the next year as well. We've done multiple donations to different organizations in town and where needed as well. We've also continued our relationship with Shaw and Farm since 2009, since I've been here. And we've also branched out and gave them more business to other districts that we have around as well. The financials this year. Another great year. And it just, I don't know what to say. Every year seems a little better and it's, it's also, it's a great feeling. These are all estimates, but I think I underestimated a little. Better to underestimate than overestimate. And so, you know, like I said, 180 days and meals, we're gonna be doing over a million meals this year. We've done that for the past three years now. We've done over a million meals and it's broken down by lunch and breakfast, the two numbers. And also, the next is the revenue part. Estimated cash sales for the end of the year is gonna be a little over 200,000. Federal reimbursements are gonna be about 4.3 million. And of course, our supply chain that I talked about earlier is 148,000, which gets us close to about a 4.6 total revenue. And then come our expenditures and, you know, we have a food cost. And then the second line is our national volume discount. That's a rebate that we get as a company. It's purchasing power that we get. So we, we make out deals with certain vendors and they give us rebates throughout the year as we purchase their items. Total labor is right across the board. Then we get into some direct expenses, admin fees and management fees, which give us a total expense. And like I said, it looks like we're gonna return. I think that number is a little low ball, but like I said, better be low than too high at, you know, a little over 750,000. But I think we're gonna be a little over that as I ran the numbers today. So great numbers. And like I said, I'll be working with Melanie and also facilities as well to come up with different projects and way we can spend this money down because we are only allowed to carry three months of, you know, revolving account money throughout the year. And that's, we do about 400,000 a month, the cost to run the department. So we'd be at a 1.2 million that we are allowed to have in our account, our revolving account. Anything over that, we try to at least get down to the balance. Next up is participation. Participation has actually increased from last year a couple percent. Which numbers are looking really good, you know, you know, just going down the list from school to school. Yeah, the high school's actually been nice to see that move up because that was always in the mid 60s. And it's nice to see that in the mid 70s now. So the high school participation has really gone up. We owe that, of course, to universal, universal free meals that we're getting currently. And that's a program where each student is allowed to get one breakfast and one lunch at no charge. And that's a state and USDA run program as well. And those numbers are through just April of this year, so. Upcoming challenges for this year, spend down the revolving account. Like I said, we can only have about three months of operating expenses. And 400K, like I said, is about 1.2. Still working with Melanie consistently on this to try to get that number down to where it needs to be at. Labor's always been an issue, employee labor's ever since COVID has hit. You know, I don't, it's not only a Lemister issue, it's, it's pretty much everywhere issue where it's, you know, some, some months are revolving doors, some months we, you know, have a solid staff. So it comes and goes, but, you know, we still plugging away. The staff that we have are doing a wonderful job keeping our students fed and keeping them going. Supply chain could be a challenge in next year. We may have it, we may not. That's up in the air as well. And the next are just a bunch of different slides that we have, just different events that we've done through the years. I didn't want to do all 50. So I just grabbed a few different events, you know, some school things that we've done and supported throughout the years, throughout this year. Some events, different events. I'm gonna get to my favorite one. Remember? Halloween, St. Patty's, Red Sox, Lucky Tray Day, Health Fair, SpongeBob Day. This is my favorite one. The kids in Northwest, one day, were just coming through the line and they asked our manager, Priscilla, they said, hey, can we have a SpongeBob Day? And she said, sure, why not? So she called me and we just, we put it all together. And I think that was probably the most fun event we had all year. The kids really got into it. The principal, the assistant principal helped out, Abby and Dan helped out great with that. And we just made it a school-wide event. It was a lot of fun. And Cinco de Mayo, Global Eats is a Chatwell's program. This is another thing that we purchased. It's a bike blender. So we're bringing this to Health Fairs. We're gonna, next year, we got it about a month ago. We're gonna be bringing it into classrooms next year. And what it does, it blends up smoothies. So, you know, kids get to get on it, pedal away. And it'll blend up smoothies. And, you know, like I said, we're gonna bring it into the classrooms next year. We're gonna have some fun with it and talk, you know, nutrition with the kids as well. Yeah, yeah, good workout for them. And that's about it. Like I said, very, very good, very good year we've had. Biggest challenges. It's a good problem, but it's to spend down the revolving account. And like I said, consistently working with Melanie and facilities with Butch and Bill to try to get this number down to where it needs to be. And right now, we're probably double what we have. So is there any questions?
Any questions? Fun? Saying about the supply chain assistance, it might end next year.
Yeah.
How, 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 how is that going to affect you, Chatwell?
Well, I mean, Ronnie, if you look at the numbers, if you take the 148 of what we made, it probably wouldn't affect us. So we'll probably be okay. But you never know what next year brings, you know? And if, you know, if they're willing to supply us with that extra money so we can get, you know, different things, you know, watermelons and cut-up fruits and, you know, special stuff like that, which we've been doing all year. You know, we want to keep that, you know, kind of stuff going. So, you know, we're waiting here, but I still don't, it won't affect us as much, you know? It might affect other districts where, you know, they don't make, you know, that, the revenue that we made this year, but it shouldn't affect. But I just wanted you all to be aware, you know, that that could happen next year. Yep.
Just indulge in my, my curiosity. How has it helped? Dietary planning, or has it ended dietary?
No, it actually helped because we give them, you know, different events. They have an agenda when they come to us. So we have to, you know, meet that agenda and criteria with them. So one hand washes the other, you know, we may send them into an elementary school to do some events, do some, you know, we've done some sports talk with the, with sports teams and things like that. So there's been different things that we've utilized them for. They've also assisted us with running some of these events as well. Like I said, one hand washes the other. They have an agenda, a criteria, and we can put them to use in our district and utilize them as well. And we've done videos over the years. Last year, we did quite a few videos and put them on Lemister TV. We, we ran into some glitches this year with the, with the TV system, the TV problem, the videos this year, so we couldn't send those out, so.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yeah. Good. Thank you, Alan. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wasn't that used to say eat fruit? Eat your fruit. Who's that?
That was the principal.
Mr. Fleming?
There's fruit over there.
Eat fruit.
Over there.
Yeah.
Eat your fruit. Good advice.
All right, now we'll move on to superintendent's evaluation. All right. Now, policy performing outside work. So I think we've reached a point where we need to, is the school committee come up with a policy for the work that we perform mostly out of center for technical education. So everyone has same opportunity, no matter who you are in the community. And I think it started when we used to have a building program. And we would put it out a year in advance. Does anybody, you know, can we build a house for you? One of the criterias was, you have to have a piece of land. And land's not easy to come by anymore. It's, it's not as inexpensive as it was. And then we were, ended up building, when we were building a house, we were building bigger houses than normal. And what ended up happening is if we ran out of time, then it was up to the person to bring in somebody to do the counters or whatever. And some people actually got upset by that because we couldn't finish. We ran out of time. But we, that was a long way from building a 1,200 or 1,500 square foot house. Then we just started to do other outside work. And I think what we have to remember is this isn't my company or my business or yours or your money. This is taxpayers' dollars that we use to do the work. So I've been working with Brian Riley, he's a city solicitor, and he works on this stuff all the time. And I'm trying to come up with something I can present to the policy committee. And what it would look like is the priority would be schools, whatever the schools need. Second priority would be the city. And then we'd have to determine what else do we do after that. So right now, there's a proposal or we did, I don't know, addition or garage or whatever. Well, you can't just. Have somebody call and say, build me a garage. And not have that, well, that's fine, but I want to donate a garage or my time and my company goes out and builds you a garage, that's my option. But you have to have a mechanism by which you offer your services to the community, right? So, if somebody.
And that we drew the name actually at one of our meetings for the housing, so that everybody would put it in. Fair chance to.
It looks like right now, and I think it's just, it just creeped away and we never had a policy. So, I think we need one, and that is, if we're gonna perform work outside, then we need to do that lottery. So if we're gonna do. You know, I mean, if we're gonna work at a nonprofit, that's a no-brainer. If we're gonna work in schools, you know, so it really should be schools. Um, city nonprofits, wherever you can help out jinnies, you know. And that's where a lot of the, but when you get into the bigger stuff, I mean, you're building a garage right now, you're talking fifty, sixty thousand dollars to build a garage. And somebody calls you and says, I want to build your garage, well, we, we better sort of seek out in the community. Is there a handicap person that needs an addition to their house? Is there a child that's handicapped and they can't get to the second floor? Put out the proposals and say, and then review them and say, you know what, these sound like good projects. And before, somebody calls me and say, I don't like Habitat Humanity, I, I do, I've always been a big supporter of Habitat, Habitat Humanity. I asked last year, if you remember, hey, we building a house for Habitat Humanity? And no. And then later we found out, uh, we're just helping out, then we find out we're building a house. Or unbeknownst to me. Um, there's a lottery. And the person to get picked is from Littleton. So, the people, the families that were from Lemminster who put in for the lottery, didn't. Get any, didn't get a house. And so what happens is, and again, I love Habitat Humanity, but. Somebody from Littleton gets a house that we build with taxpayers, taxpayers the house.
Do you want to keep it within our, as part of the policy?
Yeah, so remember the house we built, we built the house with Habitat Humanity. As a project on the corner of Spruce and Whitney Street, handicap student.
This should be a subcommittee part, you know, where they get all the, uh, all the stuff in, and then they, you know, and then bring it, you know, we make the decision as a sub and bring it to the committee.
Right, and the school committee really should be voting on things that are outside our, you know, the normal realm.
And we did have a policy around the home building thing years ago, so we can relook at that and see how we can tweak it, but we did have a policy on that.
Oh, I'm not worried about the home building, I'm worried about anything else that we do outside that's not related to nonprofit.
Right, but still that's.
Even, you know, and, and I think that even the things that are built or printing or wherever, we've got to really, that opened it up. To nonprofits and other people in the community, we shouldn't be competing with private companies. Because somebody needs, you know, letterhead, well, go buy your letterhead. If you, you know, there are plenty of places around where you can get letterhead.
And it's just that when you file for nonprofit, there's a certain, isn't there a number, five oh one? Yeah, and it's, it's laborious, isn't it?
Well, yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just saying, if you start talking about the five oh one C.
We're, we're talking about people that are already.
Talking about priority, schools, city and nonprofits.
Five oh one C.
We're not filing for anything. We're not filing for anything. Right. They're nonprofit, uh, jinnies need some farms print, applications, whatever, that's what our printing program is, teach, whatever they can do in there to help those nonprofits out. That should be the third priority out in schools and city. And then, if we're making things in their furniture or whatever it is, then. You know, we, we have a school store, maybe we build an inventory, and then we open it up to anybody in the community to come in and buy it. Now.
We, we'd also need to see what, you know, folks of CTEI say about building an inventory for a school store.
Well, no, but you can't, listen, you can call ethics and check to see whether or not, I, I can have them build something for me personally. And then, you know, the market rate is five hundred dollars and they build it for me and it's two. That's, you're gonna run into some problems, so that's why the policy would, so. If, everybody should have the opportunity, if they're making a chair, then everybody gets the opportunity to get that chair. And so, instead of, if materials are a hundred bucks and you charge a hundred and fifty, fifty stays within. Revolving account so that they can build it to buy tools and the things that they need to do, but. I, I, it's nobody's fault, I think we've just sprawled away from the original intent, trying to find projects that we can work on. And I still think we can, but I, I think we're gonna have to just realign this so that we put it out in the community and find out what's out there. And then pick the project that we think is, is best and who needs it the most. Uh, you know, there are people, you know, I, 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 I said to the principal, you know, are these people income-eligible? Like, do they meet the, you know, threshold of, you know. Um, having a tough time or whatever. I don't know whose situation is what, but I think we could find work for the CTEI and find a good, you know, like a legitimate cause. And that would help us in the, the project we did with, with Habitat Community was in Lemminster, for a Lemminster family that helped a, a child that was.
Yep.
Mobility issues, and uh, and that was like, that was a great project, but. And, and then I think we gotta, there's two lots that right now, the Housing Authority has a lot. But I don't think we'd get there right now because you've got to get a foundation in the ground so the CTEI can get started in, in September. But we own a lot right around the corner here on Birch, and then there's a lot at the end of tenth that the Housing Authority owns. So maybe what we could do is, you know, that might be, we also have. Seven or nine hundred thousand dollars to build a little community center on French Hill on Third Street. So I think those are projects that we could get in the Pike, but I don't think that's gonna help the next year's. Project, and I don't know that Habitat, you know, they're a regional group, I don't know they can do that where they're gonna build a house. And then not be able to open it up to people from Lemminster, and you might feel differently, I'm not, I'm not speaking for everybody. I, I was the person that picked it, you know, and I was like, oh no. I, I'm like, aren't you supposed to be from Lemminster? And you're like, no, I'm like, oh no, you know, I'm.
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense for Lemminster residents to benefit.
Soon as they hung up. People called my office, like, wait a minute, somebody from Littleton can get a house. You really need one, you know. Set the rules, I'm a big supporter of Habitat, but. So, all, all we'll do is actually put a policy, Brian will kind of draft it out, give it to the policy committee, and then you can. Go back and forth, but I'm not, I don't know how you would go about, you know, if the CTEI is making things, how they go.
Yeah.
Do we find a place to store it?
Find more information and work with them.
Actually get a store, and set up a business program for the students to see what it's really like in the community, set up a store, and we'll open those day Friday and Saturday. We actually pay people and we actually charge and people come in and support.
Didn't we used to do that? Didn't they have a store here? I seem to remember. When I first started teaching.
You can buy, well, they did, but then, then it went to, you could buy all your, you know, T-shirts and sweatshirts up here at the store up here, but they don't have that much room to sell, you know, chairs. Yeah, and whatever, yeah, and it's some pretty cool stuff that they make that.
I think what Sal said, it might very well be what we're gonna have to do. Set up subcommittee, whether it's policy.
We have a policy.
That was policy.
We have a policy.
Policy, or if you want to call it a different name, go ahead. But like Sal said, it has to be a subcommittee that's going to be reviewing the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, beauty applications and tease out the application and see what. Other school districts have been able to do along with the five oh one C. Can it be as a five oh one C?
We, we are not the five oh one C, the, the other folks would be.
You're gonna, go ahead, don't listen to me, someone else is gonna.
This would be like lock or jinnies or. There's plenty of.
Someone else is gonna come and ask you the same question, don't listen to me, no problem.
But they'd have to.
Questions.
You would have to show us your nonprofit status.
They would have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, but we're agreement and, and he'll draft something up, shift it all over to the committee, we all understand what has to be done, nobody's fault, we're just kind of, you know, crawling away. They're looking for a project to do, and I, I think I can set up three, but it's not gonna happen right away. Like I said, we have two lots. And wanted to do a project, so they needed something to hit right away, so whether or not we want to put it out there. Soon, that we're soliciting projects. And see if somebody comes in and says, you know, I have something, uh, I could do right away.
How big are those lots?
I mean, what's.
I guess basically, what's the maximum amount?
You, you have to have ten thousand square feet in a residence B, so you need ten thousand square feet. You need, uh, and that's it, and we would build, I'm assuming we'd be building houses similar to the one they just built, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square feet. A starter home, this isn't meant to, you know, have a five-stove garage. Three and a half baths and jacuzzi, you know, that's not what it's meant. You could probably put a duplex. Right, right. So I have a bunch of things that are in the Pike, but nothing that's gonna be ready now, but let's get that going. He'll put something really quick together, he's working on it now, I thought he was gonna have it for tonight, and get it over, and if you want to be during summer.
Yeah.
I'll come to meetings if you want. Got the principal here, I mean. We'll, we'll pound out something and then, then we can submit that to everybody, that everybody has a fair shot of using the resources that we have here. And some people don't even know about, it's like the, it, it's like the, you know, it's like this program, right, this is open culinary program here at the restaurant. It's open to everybody, everybody gets to come in here, everybody should have access. To, and it has to be a, a pack somehow, indeterminate, but everybody should have use to the resources after schools. You know, the city, and then, you know, nonprofits or whatever, and then whatever else is open, then we have to either by lottery or some way. All right, we're gonna move on now to policy performing outside work, and then we did April first minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April first?
I don't think that's.
Oh, you don't think that's.
No, it's April first, we had a meeting.
We have a meeting after. It's okay.
That's the ones that's in here. Okay, put the two.
And now we'll go to anything on policy?
Uh, no, we haven't met because we need the second.
Anything on finance? Yes, okay.
All right. All right. Warrant forty-three totaling six hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and nine cents. Warrant forty-four, two million, five hundred fifty-four thousand, fifty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. Warrant forty-five, four hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Warrant forty-six, three million. Twenty-one thousand, four hundred, uh, forty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. Warrant forty-seven, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars and six, uh, four hundred and thirty thousand, sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. And from, um. Got our revolving. Warrant forty-three, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and forty-nine cents. Warrant forty-four, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents. Warrant forty-five. Two hundred and one thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Warrant forty-six, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Warrant forty-seven, one hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
All right, you heard the recommendation for approval of the warrants, is there a second? All right, it's a second by Jennifer, are there any questions to comments? All right. All in favor, those opposed? We have a.
One transfer.
A transfer, oh, okay, yes.
Requesting to transfer eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, from the following salaries, DESI code two three zero five teachers. Two three three zero paraprofessionals. Two seven one zero guidance and DESI code. Three two zero zero health services to general fund expense, DESI code five two zero zero insurance programs.
Questions? Motion on the, um, paper? Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. In case you didn't know, the last day of school is soon eighteen. Acceptance of a gift?
Um, ten backpacks for Project Apples for incoming kindergarten.
All right. That's really cool.
I make a motion to accept the gifts.
Second it?
All in favor? And let's.
And so, we have to vote on a half day for that last day of school.
Oh.
That's why it's in there.
Half day. I was gonna.
Has somebody who has a child in the school system? The students.
Just the students. I like to make the motion to make it. Last day of school, half day for the students, oh.
My kids haven't been great the last week, so I don't know.
All right, all in favor? Last day's a half day.
For students.
The eighteenth for students. There'll be a test at the end of the day. Okay, approval of the warrants, we did, transfers we did, do we have any obsolete equipment?
We do.
Get rid of it. Can we have like a hot show where you take obsolete equipment and you build something art?
No, you need to get a little creative back there. I make a motion to, um, agree with the obsolete furniture, making it obsolete.
Set.
All right, all in favor? Any update on the field? We're ready to go, we're ready to go.
What does that mean?
Just gotta come off the. We can push something else off the schools that they need, push that up, but I think there are other things that they're trying to get. So, it's, decide what you want. You can put it out, but then it, they can only get so much out the door in the purchasing. We've got to file with, um, it's a whole process when bidding that, ten billion dollars, so.
So, do, I mean, at one point, we thought we were gonna start doing something this summer, so obviously that's not gonna happen.
No. It's gotta be published in the, but, sure. I mean. You tell the purchasing department what you want, push the side. Don't do it.
Right, so I guess, uh, my question is from, like, obviously, there's always purchases to be made, so.
There's a lot more to it.
So I, so I guess at some point, we need to make sure that, I mean, this is something we've been looking for twenty-five years, I think. Um, so, I guess, what's another, what's another year, but I guess I don't want it, I don't want it necessarily buried forever, at some point, we need to see, because it's only gonna get more expensive.
Everybody wants their project to go first, so they push everything else. They, they own so much they can get out the door, at the end of the year, people are trying to get projects. So, if, if there's, it's a priority, then they'll make it go up to the community, but it's a first decide. Hopefully you have a purchase order for stuff, and maybe that, that gets carried over, and that's the other thing, is if it doesn't. If you don't have the requisition order for a purchase, you can't carry it over. So, then you lose the money that you had for whatever.
How do we know what our options are?
Is there a lot you're trying to get purchased?
We don't know what the, the other competing demands are, so, I mean, I guess we would rely on Melanie to help us with that.
If there are things that could be pushed aside.
The cost is gonna get more and more expensive.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, it's, it's, it's not like you're not trying to get out the door.
Come, Bernie.
Right.
All right, so you're doing that.
Same place we're in, so we're trying to get our logistics through the door. So it's, it's, that's what you want us to do, and we'll do it, so if there's, you want to pick up. And they're careful because if somebody files a bid protest, now you're stuck for another eight months, we're all being. So, if you want to talk to Greg and see if there's something that, timing wise, so you can get this thing on the street and, it's not.
I'll get it going. Oh, you're gonna be me, Greg.
Yeah, I, I guess I just don't wanna, you know, I'm just gonna keep ringing it because I don't want to lose sight of it.
Yeah.
And to make sure that it's going forward at some point, because it's gonna cost more and more the longer and longer we go.
All right, and then, uh, wait, 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 let's see, um. Update on school committee compensation?
Yes.
I, I don't think it's gonna fly what we, we recommended, so I think we ought to put something out there.
Well, I think, right, but I think. Right, did the number.
No, I think we, we, we provided the courtesy to the council to say, why don't you come up with something, and then you're saying, well, why don't you, give us a number?
Right, so. Um, well, no. Did it get out to the city?
I don't remember.
Yeah, so. Right, so I guess, you know, we were proposing, and we can negotiate, but we were proposing, um, compensation for, um, ten thousand dollars. Um, no health insurance, that's still under what the city council gets, it's comparable, well, less. Comparable, but many less than some of the other districts around us. Um, and we haven't had a raise in ten years. Um, so I think it would also open it up for folks to maybe more willing to come forward and do this position to help with childcare and other kinds of things. Um, so a little bit more equity, um, the city council voted themselves a raise, uh, not too long ago, so it would be, I think, only fair that. Uh, that gets on the, their agenda, so.
You want it to be ten thousand, then you take a vote.
Yeah, all right, so I make a motion for ten thousand? Favor?
All in favor, those opposed, okay. So can you send a letter to me just saying this school committee could vote? The salary, no insurance. The salary, no insurance, without a vote. And, um.
And city council does get insurance, um, as well, so.
And then the enrollment, so I I was curious.
Excuse me, you missed old builds, oh, excuse, old business. You skipped over old business.
Which we haven't got to though.
That was a boat.
And we haven't got to the end. I don't know why.
At the end, all right, okay, fine.
So what is our enrollment, like, trying to gauge, we usually talk about this in October, but usually our heads are like this in October, so. Now, so we just graduated four hundred and thirty students. So what is, like, what's the enrollment number, say, right now at, say, sixth grade or eighth grade, I guess, maybe that? Eighth grade, a lot of times, is where parole field comes over to us. Do we know, like, roughly, is it?
I think we've stayed pretty s- s- similar.
It it tells you by grade how many students are in each grade. Right now.
Yeah, I mean, so what what's, let's. Eight is when people kind of come over from parole field.
Yeah.
Just picking it up. All right, so that's consistent.
Yeah.
And what do we, what do we drop to next? Like, usually we start off with, like, at kindergarten, it seems like we start off with, like, five hundred kids. Like, this is the, we talked about class, well, this is the biggest class, but then we reach the high school, this four hundred and thirty kids, like, where did, where'd they go? It's great. So we're pretty consistent.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, in other words, retention is.
Yeah, I mean, we have a transient population to some extent, so that figure always goes up and down a couple hundred.
Between sixty-one and sixty-two hundred. We float right in that number all year long, back and forth, back and forth.
But the number you're looking for should be.
October, yeah.
It's what gets reported.
Getting right now. They're fake.
But they're not fake, they're real kids.
Well, they're 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 fake because they don't, yes. Right, right, yes, it does. It doesn't count for that.
Right, right.
It's like.
But we do all our planning according to those numbers.
It's October seven numbers that we need to, but Jennifer.
Right, and we won't know that until October first.
My point wrong was, like, graduate quarters through Thursday, so. I would retain retention rate. I wouldn't do it along the way. We just were picking it up.
No, the question of those four, whatever number you have, how many of them were in the sixth grade?
That's the question.
And I could ask them on Saturday.
You're talking about.
No, I don't think, I don't think they're gonna answer.
Right.
How many of those four hundred and so on were situated? Because you're all, you're the one that said it, then you start off with this number and then by the time, all of a sudden, they're gone. How many of those were there in the sixth grade?
I guess we have better tracking, we can better.
Yeah, figure that out.
Figure out data based on that, but, okay, and now, uh, new and old business. Any new old business?
I just have to say the Priest Street Playground looks amazing.
Yeah, it does.
They just finished that. They look. Don't carry happy with that.
Yeah.
The adults have way too much fun over there.
I just wanted to give quick congratulations to Nathan Daniels and Bruna De Olivera, who won the Tammy Award for the pajama game. Nice. Thanks. Congrats.
Nice, good, wow.
Old business. Are you ready? Are we ready now for old business?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
You looked at me and said, old?
That was a mistake, big mistake. So the last time I brought up issues and concerns about for high school, safety concerns, behavioral concerns, and, uh, Dr. Romano contacted me. I met with him for a couple of hours, actually. It generated a lot of good dialogue with some, um, ideas he had, which I think are very easily implemented with regard to safety checks, the metal detectors, because there were questions about that, use of that. Um, the bathrooms where there are a lot of problems, uh, vaping, um, intimidating younger students. And, um, as I said, he had some good ideas. There hasn't been any follow-up. I have checked and I asked about the SROs. He had some ideas about that. Um, and also I brought up the attendance issue, which is mentioned in the April first minutes. And there appears to be some actually confusion about that because he did make an announcement to the staff about the twenty days or whatever, which is more than what the state allows for absenteeism. So, um, it's in the policies. I know that it could, somebody mentioned it could have been a typo or a misprint, but it was brought up to the faculty so that there's a lot more leverage and he has a serious concern about that also. What he would like to do is break it down into quarters, which makes more sense because at least you can monitor it so that by the end of a quarter, the child and the guardian is aware of what that attendance level is as opposed to waiting until the end of a semester. And by that time, the kid could already have hanged himself or herself because of the excessive days. So what he would try to do is, uh, nip it in the bud, so to speak, and do it by quarter. But again, that's not indicated in the policy the way that it's written, not our policies. And that's a, that's a huge concern. It isn't rocket science if a kid isn't coming to school for whatever reason.
It's a national concern.
It's a national concern, Paula, absolutely. So it isn't like we're out of line with anybody else. It's happening everywhere. And of course, the population that stands out are children who are already challenged or they're in need so that it just exacerbates the issue in terms of, um, how well they're performing in school. So I note that, um, it's been mentioned about reaching out to parents, to the particular culture, whatever. So hopefully, um, we'll see what happens with that. Um, with regard to the metal detectors, he did say that it is a huge expense. And practically speaking, how can you possibly pa- place, um, metal detectors at every entranceway in every school? But he did have an idea that I thought sounded okay, and he said perhaps the there can be a check by the SROs with or without the metal detectors for those students who are late. Because that may generate some concern on their part, like, whoops, you know, we're coming in forty-five minutes late. Uh-oh, somebody's at the door and they're checking. So that was one idea he had. Um, he also mentioned.
Not taking into account kids who have medical appointments and excused. I mean, I think that would just be, um, right, I just think that's, I don't know how feasible that is.
Well.
Because you might be targeting a certain population, but lots of kids, you know, come in legitimately for reasons.
I think we all realize that, except that there are frequent flyers.
So we're starting to get out all the procedures. Trying various things. We even used them Saturday for graduation, so.
That's really.
Took a long time for everybody to get through.
Yeah. Worth it.
And and remember, the SROs aren't there. That, I think you need to read up kind of why, why SROs are in the school, the relationships, we're not there.
Yeah.
I get that. I understand that. I think we all understand that. I spent many years teaching, so I do get it. Um, but also, these are points, these are valid points, and somehow they have to be addressed. So, um, you know, there are policies, we need to tweak those policies, but we really need to take a serious look at the attendance rate, the tardiness rates, and I certainly understand that there are students who have appointments. But it is out of control. It was out of control when I was here a few years ago and it is, it's worse now with kids walking in at eight-thirty, quarter of now with their Starbucks coffee. And I mean, let's be real, something, I don't know what, I don't know what the answer is.
This is just discussion back and forth.
Yep.
So, but. Having had a child who was one of the ones chronically late, I had spoken with Romano at multiple times and of the, really, from COVID on. They felt that since COVID, the tardiness had been gradually improving. So is what you are seeing a big man in time and then you're comparing it to pre-COVID? Or what are they saying about numbers from twenty-one to currently, I'm asking?
What I'm hearing is that it's become increasingly, uh, more of a concern. That's what I'm hearing from faculty.
Right, so I think that, you know, certainly with some frequent fires, if they need a certain criteria, a CRA can be filed. Um, a report with DCF can be filed, there's remedies, um, or interventions that can be made for some chronic, you know, situations. Um, you know, I think that this everybody needs to pay attention to attendance at all levels, so I'm not disagreeing with that. And some of it is the responsibility of the parent to make sure their child is up and out and to school on time. Um, that's sometimes a challenge for some families because maybe they're working, you know, two jobs or leave early or who knows what. Um, so it's a systemic issue across the whole country, but it is something that we have paid great attention to over the last year.
I would have to say, wasn't the last report, like, beginning of this year showed improvement over last year?
Not where we want to be ever.
There wasn't improvement.
Right, but it was, so you you will actually see over this summer, uh, Department of Education, they came to visit us and they checked our family, um, our family welcoming center, and they are going to be addressing it pretty stringently around attendance and and helping families get there. There's all sorts of reasons why students aren't there. Um, but the state recognizes that it's a, it's a huge.
Ted Wilder, that's.
Yeah, and and I realize that, but I'm trying to, you know, generate discussion, and that's what this was all about, because we're about the curate.
Educator, right? You can force a kid to come to school, be physically in the building, but if the kid isn't here and really not interested in what's going on here and they would prefer to go to the Shriver Center, or they would prefer to give you work a little bit, how many people don't go to college and then later on go to college, right? So, uh, hear me out. So forcing people, uh, look at, how how do we get funding? State gets funding for the federal government because, based on enrollment. How do we get our funding based on enrollment, right? So we have a vested interest in getting kids to come to school here.
Right.
But don't lose sight of the fact that next year we open another building. And that, uh, every kid from Leamis to Center of Excellence almost had the same story. It just, education here in the buildings, you know, five across, five deep, just didn't work for them.
Right, right.
And it for excellence, even though we had them up here rather than their own space. Seemed to me like we had a bunch of happy kids who were like, not just happy, but excited. Actually, it's, they went from, from not very excited to come to school and maybe thinking about, should I go to school? And that's the last priority to, I can't believe it. This has really been good for me. But we're adding another tier to that next year. We're gonna have more options for these students to learn in in a capacity we never had. And I toured the building the other day, the other day. It's a beautiful building. It's a great environment. And we just have to understand, I've been saying this for years, every kid learns differently. We've got to plan accordingly.
That's why we're fortunate we have, we have CTEI because that also attracts students that don't learn necessarily in the traditional way. I get that.
That just doesn't want to come here and wrestle with them. Every day we drag them down, have the tune office of the old days, the Chewy Label. Yeah, I am in the school, make them sit here, but nothing ever gave, came good from that. And so we're providing more options, understanding, the world's complicated.
And I get that, yeah, I'm.
Education's fun.
But I'm presenting it because I feel that that's my responsibility and also the fact that I did, uh, meet with Dr. Romano and he was very, um, interesting to speak with and, uh, he's, he also has his concerns and it was a very productive meeting. So now, you know, moving forward, I'm just saying that the these are.
Every year I start off with saying, who's reading? I stop and ask everybody, teachers, mischief. So did you read the rules and regulations, policy procedures? To tell you the truth, did you read them?
Which one?
Ninety-nine percent for the school.
For the school?
Everybody has to come into the school, understanding basic five things. We won't tolerate, you know, violence in the school, and we gotta stick with it. They have to know, we'll do anything to help them out. Whatever it takes, we've done that, but you can't, right? We're spending half our day on these kinds of things when, you know, we really got to pound the message through that. You you know, it's more than just respect, give and get it. It's, this is, there are rules to be in these buildings. And if you can't abide by the rules, then there are other rules to handle that, right?
Yeah, right, because there are, there are safety concerns.
Security and you're talking about kids coming in late. And I understand, you don't want to lose a kid, but we're gonna, we we've got online learning now. We you've got to, we've got to move with other ways to try to adapt to people's learning experience because before you, you had no choice. You had one choice. You go to the class, you sit there, you daydream, eat life, whatever it is to get you good through the day. Doodle, doodle, but now there's so many other ways and 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 I think the state's got to look at is either more programs that we have for our CTEI, more whatever, more options for these kids to take an interest in it. For some kids, LSE has been a really good experience, like, the whole class said the same thing. It's been such a good experience. And their parents are like, oh, my God, I can't believe this. That's my kid? Like, I can't believe that's the same kid.
Right, right.
We have a whole school for that now, right?
Which is great, but there is still.
Don't interns.
And safety concerns, the safety concerns within the building.
Right. And we've got to get the. Buildings have to be safe day one, over everything. First thing is.
Right.
School's gotta be safe. If it's not, that's safe for every kid to, you live the kid, you leave the kid off at the school and we're gonna make sure that the building's safe and your kid is too, right?
Right, it's in locas parentis. I mean, that's our responsibility. That's, you know, teachers.
I keep coming up with, you got to pound through ten, ten or five things that everybody's got to understand while coming into the school building.
Right.
And you pound those five things, because nobody else is reading.
Ron and then Josh. Ron had to stand up first, so Josh.
May thirty-first, Friday, I attended, uh, junior civics action project, projects here at the high school. Mary Fields, for the teacher. And, um, it wa- it was very well presented by the students. Uh, they did their studies. Did their studies on vaping, bathrooms, how to deal with. Uh, I asked them if they could send the presentations to us because you know how we're always trying to figure out how to deal with this. They did the study themselves. One, two, three. I think it was five students of each project. And, uh, it was well versed, well argued. Uh, I'm asking Paula and, um, Steve, if they can get in touch with Mary Fields and have, 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 have the slide presentation sent to us. Uh, it might be another avenue of information because they had all, they they had all figured out the access to the bathrooms, which bathrooms were more used than than others. Uh, the difficulties, even the teachers were saying about the difficulties they've had, the the amount, the number of students. Uh, it was a good, it was a good presentation. Like I said, it was Friday, May thirty-first, and it started, it was supposed to start, it did start it. It was supposed to start at nine forty-five, it started at ten thirty. And, uh, it, I, uh, I enjoyed it very much. It, uh, it was a good presentation, it really was.
And I did suggest to her also about having the students present here. I thought that it was well worth it. Nice. Josh?
Um, I just wanted to where final comment of the night. I just wanted to formally in this school committee session, say thank you to Paula for the years that she's given us and the and the distance that she's took, taken this district. Uh, made us a model for the, for the region. And I know I really appreciate it. I'm sure the rest of the committee does too, so I just want to, want to say thank you and out of the way.
And you've done an amazing job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'll just close the meeting. We can have another discussion. Seven hundred more. And I'm gonna say it and say it and say it and say it till it's, right? You either want to deal with this stuff or you want to just talk about it. If you don't pound through the message to everybody in the system, teachers, teachers, parents, everybody, these are the rules.
I'm agreeing with you, Dean.
If you can't send your, if this kid's gonna assault other people in the school or a teacher or put your hands on somebody, absolutely won't be, I don't care about it, EIP, we'll go to court, EIP, LKG, whatever it is, right? The reality is, you want to sit around and talk about it, you want to do something about it, right? So the principals, the deans of students, we can't be running, you know what we're spending on security in these buildings? We can't spend. We can't spend it on education, why? Because we tolerate it, so every student has to understand five fundamental things about coming into our building. I wouldn't tolerate it at City Hall. Dean has got an armed security guideline, no weapons in here, no this, no that, you don't get inside the, you, you just don't, okay? So we could talk about it, this will be year number thirty-two, you wanna talk about it some more, we'll spend another hour and a half talking about this, where are we going? Nowhere, it's gonna be the same kinda stuff, you send your kid to school, we'll do whatever we can, we'll do the best we can to make that kid successful, get him interested in everything. But if you can't act appropriately, then you can't stay here, right? And go to court.
Agree with you, I mean, you know, I taught.
How many times, you know how many times I brought this up? Whatever the five fundamental, you come here, you can't do this, you can't assault other people, you can't do this, you can't bully, you can't vague, you can't do this, if you can't do those things, you can't come to our buildings. That's all, I'll spend the money on fighting them in court, and let the judge say, it's okay to send Johnny in here while he just bullies everybody and. Puts this place into madness and creates havoc all day, while the kid is trying to learn.
Well, that's.
This is, these buildings are to learn, these buildings are to learn.
Uh, second up? Um, and just before we turn, please, if you have not sent me your superintendent's evaluation, do so ASAP, Paula's leaving very shortly, I need to meet with her first.
This again, all over again.
Ray had a question before.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm just.
Voting yes?
I'm just, let's try to understand what's going on.
You want to just, want me to explain it one more time?
No.
No, no, like, we have a conversation.
Don't bring these issues up anymore, okay? Don't bring them up, I won't take them up, they're not worth taking up, because you don't wanna do anything about it.
Why?
You're passing me off as, I don't know what I'm talking about, I know what I'm talking about, I know what I'm talking about, you're tired of listening to me, you don't wanna do anything about it, fine, alright? You don't wanna do anything?
What's going on right now?
I, I don't.
Because I don't think that's what we were saying.
Okay.
That's all.
Thanks for carrying the ball.
That's all. Sorry to that.
Certainly, she's right, nobody wants to talk about it.